...have your attention, we'll go ahead and get started this morning. We have a long agenda and we likely will have to recess somewhere around 9:30 or so in order to go over and sit in on the city council meeting. They have an important decision that we're interested in. For everybody's information, we are videotaping or what do you call it? Recording this meeting today, that's what these are about. And so, don't want to surprise anyone, but we're important meetings, so we'll have it all documented and then see how that goes if we want to do this regularly or not. But anyway, thank you all for being here at this early hour. We'll get started and Mr. Manager, why don't I ask you to kick us off and maybe you have an introduction to make?
I do. First, before we get into this, I'd like to introduce the new Director of the MABCD, Chris. Won't you stand up? Chris Labrum, coming to us from the Air Force. Don't hold that against him. Just talk slower. No, but we, this is, this comes to us after an exhaustive search, multiple times, multiple announcements, just to find the right person. And Chris definitely rose to the top and we're lucky to have him. And I look forward to working with him and what he can bring as far as leadership to MABCD and this community. So, without further ado, we do need to get into this to make our way through it. Yes, it's being taped. I think a good thing about this being taped is it's going to give us the opportunity and give you commissioners an opportunity after this meeting if we have to rush out at about the hour and a half mark, I think is about where we'll probably have to pull out of this if we're not done yet. But it'll give you opportunity to actually run it back and watch it again and see the parts that you want to see. It might be useful if we could hold the questions to the end unless there's just something that you need clarified that's being presented at that moment to give us the opportunity to get through this and get as much of the slides done. We got a full house. We asked for a lot of participants to be here in order to have the perspective of the owners or the other electeds that are certainly a part of this space management discussion. As you know, as you know, last year, I started on this quest and asked the staff to start looking at space management issues in the budget cycle last year. It was clear that this was, this was going to be discussed and this was a concern and that started us strategically looking at space management and what that means. And the staff is working diligently on that for this last year. Tanya is the lead on it right now. She's going to be presenting the slides. Tanya, if you could take it away and get us into it.
All right. Well, good morning, Commissioners. As Mike said, I'm here this morning to provide an update on space management. Before I get into it, I will tell you that I've made a little difference this morning. I think on handouts, you guys are all used to turning left. Well, I thought I'd be a little different this morning and have you flip up, so I apologize for that glitch. So, today we will discuss county space owned and leased properties. We will talk a little bit about county courthouse space utilization and provide some detail there. We will hear from Ellen House, Court Administrator, District Attorney Mark Bennett, and Sheriff Jeff Easter on the county courthouse judicial operations and space needs. And then we will go over some additional county space needs. So, to cover our county buildings, both owned and leased, GIS put together a really slick web application that covers our owned properties, which we know to be 197 properties, our owned facilities, which for this purpose and ease of application, you'll see 73 facilities. We know that we own over 200 facilities. The way that that was done through GIS, a good example would be the zoo who has multiple facilities. They counted that as one facility, just for ease of purpose, as you're looking at this application. As well, we know that we have, excuse me, 23 leased facilities and that will drop down to 20 in 2018 with the majority of those leases being in public services. The treasurer with three leases, corrections with two, sheriff with two leases, and the appraisers with one lease. So, let me show you this application real quick. And this application will be at your disposable, excuse me, at your disposal to use as you see fit. Right here, what we're looking at is the county map and you'll see the blue, which are our owned facilities, the green being our leased facilities. And there are several ways to maneuver through this application. You can hover over the map and zoom in to find various locations. So, if you're looking just for your district to see what's in there, you can do that. There is also, you can click on these land-owned or buildings-owned, same with leased, to see what our leased facilities are. For example, you can click on aging, go even further onto the link, and that provides some additional information as well as where that location is on the map. So, just an overview of that. Again, the link is here. You just put that on your desktop and that will take you and at any time you can maneuver through that map. The other piece I want to point out is this, at the top is this full property list, which is the list that Facilities owns, which lists out all of our facilities, the location, and square footage if we have that information. And so, that is on that application as well. Okay, so one of our largest owned properties is the Sedgwick County Courthouse. And to provide a little history, that was built in the late 50s and opened in 1960. Occupants of that building was the county commission, county treasurer, clerk, and register of deeds, appraiser, records, election commissioner, district court, sheriff, jail, and coroner. Fast forwarding today to 2017, some of that has changed. We no longer have the election commissioner, jail, or coroner in the building, but we do have finance, county manager's office, county council's office, GIS, and courthouse police. The gross square footage on the county courthouse is 294,699. Of that gross square footage, 213,887 is usable or rentable square footage. So, to speak a little bit about the county courthouse space usage, I've identified three areas. The first area being judicial operations, which is district court, district attorney, and sheriff. Sheriff judicial operations only. That occupies approximately about 143,857 square feet in the county courthouse, or about 67 percent. The sheriff nonjudicial operations occupies approximately 9,385 square feet. And that's for the sheriff's investigation, administrative support, and patrol administration, about 4 percent. The last piece being county operations, which occupies approximately 54,442 square feet. Again, those departments in the county operations, county courthouse, are the commission, treasurer, register of deeds, clerk, county manager, county council of finance, records, maintenance, GIS, and courthouse police. And that encompasses about 26 percent of the courthouse space usage. As you recall, back in February during the budget retreat, we gave an update on the short-term and long-term space needs of the county and we indicated we would come back to you at a further date after we've had some time to do some further analysis. And so, this is looking at, again, the county courthouse space and those entities that encompass the courthouse, specifically the judicial operations. And so, we enlisted the assistance of Justin Graham with Schaefer Johnson Cox Frye, who's here today, to do some programming with these departments and help us to understand what the space needs are in terms of square footage needs. District court, their existing courthouse facility square footage is 119,390. After a programming study or space need study, that square footage need is 149,625. So, a need there of an additional 30,235 square feet. The DA, the current existing courthouse facility, 20,067 square feet. Programming need there is 35,202 or an additional square footage need of 15,135 square feet. And last, we have the sheriff, who occupies in the courthouse 13,785 square feet. Judicial operations on the eighth floor, that's 4,400 square feet. The nonjudicial operations for the sheriff, which is on the second and third floor, encompasses about 9,385 square feet after the programming need done with Justin. The square footage need there is 15,785 square feet, so an additional square footage need of 2,000. In total, that's an additional square footage need for district court, DA, and sheriff's office of 47,370. At the time, the budget retreat, we understood from district court that they expressed that they would likely see one judicial officer in the next year, two in the five to six years, and an additional one in the next 10 to 20 years. District court has also moved from a central assignment caseload to a permanent assignment or decentralization. And so, I'd like to invite Ellen House, Court Administrator, to come up and speak to the space needs for district court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Tanya mentioned, we are starting to move our move from a centralized case assignment system to an individual calendar system. And so, I just wanted to briefly and simply show you what that looks like. Right now, when a case is filed, it's all filed with the district court clerk. And the clerk, our computer system puts together a daily docket that goes out to certain judges who are presiding judges over areas like civil, criminal, family law. And so, I'm just going to talk about criminal this morning for simplification purposes. But that daily docket then is given to the presiding criminal judge. And that presiding criminal judge, every first appearance, every preliminary hearing, bench trials, motions, pleas, jury trials, they all start at the centralized presiding judge. And so, every day, he takes that docket and then he assigns out the work to the judges in his department as things come along. The attorneys all go to the one courtroom where the presiding criminal judge is and they let him know if it's going to actually go that day, or if it's going to be continued, or if they've decided to plea, that sort of thing. So, that's how the work is then distributed to all the judges in that department, which are represented by the black triangles at the bottom. And then, once they have that one hearing, they send it back to the clerk, you know, either that it was taken care of, if it was dismissed, you know, whatever the next step needs to be. And so, then that clerk does the data entry and puts in the next step of the case, which then goes back to the centralized presiding judge to be distributed again. And so, just because one judge may have heard the preliminary hearing, it could go to a different judge for the first motion and then a different judge for the second motion and maybe a different judge for the plea. And so, it's all based upon who is available that day to work. What we are moving to is called an individual assignment system. So, the cases will still be filed with the district court clerk. And again, this is just criminal. We are pushing to still have centralized first appearances because we do our first appearances a lot by video with the jail and it would be difficult to have that happen in every courtroom. And so, we're hoping to still keep that one piece centralized. But then, after first appearances occur, that case is going to be assigned permanently to a judge. And so, that judge will hear everything in a particular case. So, there's going to be uniformity of the judge throughout the case where we don't have that now. So, does, does that make sense? Okay.
Are there any questions? Okay, I think we got it.
Okay. The history of our judicial positions in this district, in 1977, we underwent, the state underwent what was called court unification. And at that point in time, we started with 22 judges. Over the past 40 years, six judicial positions have been added. What we expect in the near future is to add four more judicial positions, but we do have a space need for five more courtrooms. And I'll explain that here in a minute. But we expect that over the next, definitely in the next 20 years, probably three more in the next five to six, and then one more in the next six to 10. And so, what our courtrooms look like now in this courthouse, the green represents current courtrooms and the rectangles are jury trial courtrooms. And we currently have 19 of those. The second column are our hearing rooms. They're courtrooms, but they don't have jury facilities. And so, we have seven of those, four of which have district court judges in them, two are utilized by our administrating hearing officers that hear our child support cases, and then one is used for small claims. And then, we also have five courtrooms out in the juvenile building that's represented in the third column by the purple. What it will look like in the future is we are proposing that we add five more jury trial courtrooms to this building. We don't see the need to add any more hearing rooms because they don't have the flexibility that we need. We had to move two district judges off of the sixth floor into jury trial courtrooms in this past year in anticipation of making this change from the centralized system to the individual system so that those judges could have jury trial courtrooms. But the five additional courtrooms are represented at the bottom in the blue rectangles and they're represented with the yellow triangles as the new judicial positions. Most people, when they think of courts, they think of the judges. But the courts are really made up of a lot more than judges and take a lot more space than just the judges. One judge actually equals an aide, a court reporter, two clerks, and two CSOs, two court service officers. So, the addition of one judge really is the addition of six or seven offices.
Does each judge have their own stuff? I thought there were some pooling of resources being utilized for some of that staff.
We do not, at this point, have the same number of court reporters that we have judges. We do have some roving court reporters, but recently, the judges that have been added across the state have also received the court reporter position as well.
Okay, but is there pooling of, I thought, somebody told me, I thought, is there not pooling of resources where a judge can use any of the reporters or anything like that?
Well, that is true. That is true. But we still have to have enough to cover the new judges coming in.
Because they're all being utilized all the time?
They are. And that's why we have, when we talk about the FTR machines, the recorders, that's why we have those is for when we run out of live reporters and the judges have to put things on recorder. And that's their last wish or desire is to put it on recorder. Everybody prefers to have a live reporter because they help so much in the courtroom. Okay? So, while we have no lack of business, we have a definite lack of space. Why does this happen to me? I don't. [laughing]. So, our clerical offices right now are completely out of space, as is our adult probation department in the basement. Our pre-sentence investigation and family court services have no area to add anybody. Our information technology, quite frankly, we could honestly use two more people right now, except I don't have any place to put them. And then, our court trustee is also out of space. Right now, we are moving them out of the Occidental lease into the Historic Courthouse. Our preference would be to have them in this courthouse, but we're utilizing the space that we can find right now and so, we're moving them across the street. So, if we tried to fit everybody into the building for our needs, this is what the courthouse would look like.
Very creative, Bill Trish.
Thank you. Okay, so, moving on, next, we'd like to hear from Mark Bennett, District Attorney, to speak on the district attorney's space needs.
Good morning.
So, little overview, we did this during the presentation of the VOCC, I don't know, a month ago or so. So, some of this is a little old hat, but just to keep a quick overview of the office, the structure. Currently, with the district attorney, we have deputy district attorneys. On the left is Ann Swiegel's division, which includes the appellate side. She's the supervisor of the appeals and then handles a number of other issues that come up before the office. District Attorney, Deputy District Attorney Justin Edwards is reflected in the middle. He's got the trial division. That's going to be all of our criminal trial divisions, general trial, one, two, sex crimes, gang unit, consumer, white collar crime, and the traffic division. And on the far right is going to be Ron Pascal, who's the deputy over the juvenile division. Obviously, we have a separate juvenile courthouse. That's where we're going to have our child needed care cases, otherwise referred to as SNC, juvenile offender, JO cases. We also have the probate and care and treatment cases, which is a little, doesn't necessarily fit with juvenile, but it's one of our responsibilities as well and that's to handle the folks who are a threat or danger to themselves or others based upon their mental health status. It's handled by the probate judge typically. And several years ago, the probate judge was left, the downtown courthouse moved over to juvenile. And so, that's where my staff is. So, we use a juvenile attorney to handle that proceeding. Pardon me. We've getting a little more granular here to give you some, an idea of how many people are in each division. I would say, jumping ahead to one thing here, yeah, we've got, well, it just gives you an idea of how many attorneys are in each unit and the support staff that goes along to support their efforts. I think the most instructive thing for today's presentation is probably the next slide. Ideally, we would have, what we've done, and I heard Ellen talk about this a moment ago, they've had to move people out of the main courthouse to accommodate the space needs. Well, we've had to do the same thing. So, for instance, the far right in the yellow, these are units that support the criminal adult side of things, but they are not located currently in our adult courthouse downtown. They're, we've had to move them to our juvenile division simply out of space because we're out of space. For instance, appeals. We have five attorneys and one support staff down there right now, and they are the people who can handle all of our appeals. And you can imagine that, well, first of all, every criminal case, even the people who enter a plea have a right to appeal and most of them do. And even if they've entered a plea and don't really have an issue, they'll still file something. I mean, it's, why wouldn't you? I guess you've got the opportunity, you've got a court-appointed attorney, you'll do it. We have to respond to every one of those. Now, then, there are the substantive appeals. But the reality is, most of the appellate work that our appeals attorneys do has to do with criminal. There's very few child needed care appeals, there's very few juvenile offender appeals, so most of what happens, the lion's share is going to be appeals coming from the criminal division. Now, it would make sense for them to be downtown where the files are accessible, where the attorney who handled the case, tried the case or is accessible. But out of space needs years ago, we sent them back to juvenile. Now, what that means is daily, we have people who run back and forth physically and carry files from this building to that building. It has worked, but if you're asking, you know, what my needs assessment would be over the next three to 10 years, it makes sense to bring them back down here with the regular criminal enterprise. The adult criminal diversion, we have diversion programs, juvenile and adult. We have had to move all of our diversion programs to the juvenile building because we're out of space down here. So, if you are an adult who's accused of a crime and you are diversion eligible in Sedgwick County, you will go to the juvenile courthouse to see your diversion or make your diversion application and meet with our staff who handle diversion simply because we're out of space here. It doesn't make a lot of sense, but at the same time, it was something we could do to relieve some space needs. We've sent them down to the juvenile division. So, the point is, if we were to be operating frankly at maximum efficiencies, and the inefficiencies that come with this are just the lack of ability to have those people in-house. It also has to do with the infrastructure needs, meaning we have to literally take court, take files from one office to the other. We have two runs a day typically where we have one of our investigators get in the car and drive down there and bring it back and forth. It works and it can go on working for a while, but is it the most efficient way to run our office? Obviously not. So, if we were right off the bat, going to change something, one of the things we would do is bring back those nine folks who are really supporting and part of the adult criminal prosecution enterprise of the district attorney's office and move them back from the juvenile division. Criminal cases in a 10-year trend. There's ups and downs along the way. One thing I would point out though is you get toward the far end, the right end of the spectrum. Over the last several years, we have, in our legislature, several of you have served in our legislature and will remember this, we have had an effort to take some of the strain off the prison system. And so, to do that, they have removed a few of the crimes from the felony level and put them down in either a non-grid felony or put them on the misdemeanor side of things. What that means is, for instance, third-time shoplifts, low, we've increased the penalty or the amount of loss necessary to trigger a felony. What else? Oh, misdemeanor marijuana, it used to be a second-time conviction led to a felony. That's now a third time. My point is, there's more and more of those cases that are staying either in the civil or, excuse me, in the misdemeanor realm, well, they're staying in the misdemeanor realm where they're going to be handled in some other fashion. But the net effect for my office is this, we're having fewer and fewer of those sort of lower-level cases that we're having to file. The municipal court is handling those, but if you see, our numbers really aren't declining, meaning if we're filing 3,500 cases, they are, for the most part, going to be serious felonies. We're no longer filing second-time marijuana charges, the city's handling those. But our numbers are not decreasing significantly. In fact, we're higher than we were two, three, four years ago in the late, what, from 20, you have to go back to 2010 to find numbers as high as we've had the last two years despite the fact that we're not having to deal with some of that, those smaller cases. So, the reality is, most every case we handle is going to be of the felony level and more and more, we're seeing higher-level felonies, some more serious felonies, person felonies, what the police department will call Schedule I felonies. In terms of the project, I was asked to take part in here and that is to let's project ahead. What realistically are we going to need to keep pace with not only the nature of the cases we have, the volume of the cases we have, but also what it takes increasingly to project those cases, excuse me, to put those cases together and ready for trial? You have heard me say over the last several years at every presentation that the technology that's being brought to bear in the criminal arena, while helpful in many, many ways, things like body cameras and surveillance cameras and recording of every type of interview and interaction frankly with the citizenry, all of the are fantastic. However, someone has to sit down and listen or watch and attend to those things individually. And there's no way to do it at this time other than in real time. So, what used to take a short amount of time to prepare a case now takes significantly longer. And as a result, you know, to handle 3,500 cases, it's not quite the way it used to be. I remember years ago, what, mid-2000s, probably 15 years ago, I had a young lady come to my division and I looked at her caseload. She had come from the drug unit and she was going to the sex crimes unit that I was in charge of. And most of my sex crimes attorneys handled about 65 to 75 cases at a time. She had 150 cases coming in from the drug unit. Well, in the drug unit, you can handle that. The average drug case is going to be, you know, 50 pages. You can take it home in a night, read it, get ahold of the cops, make sure you talk to the clinician who tested the drugs, and in a matter of, you know, a couple of days, you could be ready for a trial. Couldn't do that with. Couldn't do that with sex crimes, obviously, those were far more, each individual case had far more evidence brought to bear. But every case now is like that. Every case has dozens of pages, sometimes hundreds of pages worth of transcripts and videos to watch. It's just, you know, the load is increasing. So with that in mind, looking ahead, we got very granular at this, trying to decide what it's going to take for us to keep pace with things if nothing else changes, if we continue to have the same type of crime trends that we're seeing today, as well as the same system that we're operating in today. The projected staff needs would be two more attorneys in the juvenile complex, five more support staff to support that enterprise down there, and then downtown, seven attorneys, and we can, I can break it down for you, but it's, we've got, we need another consumer attorney, we need a couple more appellate attorneys, we needed one more attorney in the sex crimes unit, just, you know, when, broke it down again at the granular level, and then all of the support that it takes to keep the office running. Now, that's a three-to, excuse me, three-to-10-year program, and I would say that if nothing else changed, that right there would create a problem for me, and that is this, I am literally out of space. We have converted bathroom to storage, we have, you know, literally, you know, there's an old conference room that we used to utilize that's no longer used for that, we've got an office in there. We've done about everything we can do, shy of starting knocking down walls and putting offices at half the size they are now, which is not really workable. So we've got an issue. I talked to a friend of mine who used to work in his office, who's now in Johnson County in Kansas City, and he asked if we, you know, what our plans were for, we're kind of comparing notes about our offices, and I said, well, one of the issues we have here is, I couldn't hire another attorney at the moment because I couldn't add an attorney, I don't have an office to put him in. And that's the reality we face. Now, against that backdrop, we have another impact, another thing that's impacting my ability to run the office long-term. And if I'm going to be sitting in your shoes, trying to figure out what we're going to do in terms of space needs for my office, one thing we need to attend to is the reality that there's going to be an impact on this decentralization that Ellen just talked about, where we go from a single judge who then assigns cases out every day, to whichever judge happens to be available. That has served us, and frankly, served us pretty well for the last 40, 50 years, since the 60s. The reasons for the change are numerous, but they're happening, and that's, I think it's a, when the Supreme Court, Chief Justice, Supreme Court sends you a letter and says this is what I want to happen, you, I think that's what's referred to as a unilateral negotiation. You simply say yes, and then you start to figure out how to make it work. It's hard for me to say exactly what the impact's going to be on my office, because we haven't done this since the 60s. There's not too many folks around who remember the days when we had a decentralized individual assignment docket. But I can say this, if we're going to go to what I believe the current notion is, that we would have to have about 12 judges in the criminal division, the idea would be that, as Ellen indicated, cases are charged, there's a first appearance. I will just parenthetically say, I'm going to push to keep some of the central assignment role a little longer than first appearance, but that may or may not happen. But at some point, these cases are going to get assigned individually to these 12 judges, meaning every single day, instead of me sending my pool of attorneys to one judge, and then being assigned out the ones that are for hearing, I'm going to have to have attorneys in all 12 judges, and essentially, each judge runs his own calendar, and I'm supposed to be there. I've talked to other jurisdictions who handle it that way. This is not an uncommon practice, this is a established model for running a courthouse. Johnson County does it this way, Reno County has a kind of a hybrid model of the two, Shawnee County does it this way primarily. And what most of them, what we find that they've done is, they assign either two or three attorneys to each individual judge, a senior-level attorney, someone with a little less experience than somebody with fairly, very limited experience, coming out of law school, who are then able to handle whatever comes their way. For me to do that, then, I would need at least 24, more likely 36 attorneys, ready to handle, you know, be assigned to every one of those. That would accommodate for the guy who's in jury trial today, and the other one who's prepping the case for tomorrow. It would accommodate for people taking time off and people having, you know, vacations and that sort of thing. Sickly, you don't want to have just one person assigned, because then they're, you know, master of all, what's that, jack-of-all-trades, master of none in each individual courtroom. If that's the model we go to with 12, then this three-to-10-year slide before, that's a, you know, that's 10, that's 27 folks, two folks a year over the next 10 years roughly. You know, this strikes me as a fairly modest projection. The decentralization, the minute that goes into effect, I've got to be ready to stand ready and have folks there. I don't have 36 attorneys, I don't have 28 attorneys to put into criminal. Right now, there's about 22 attorneys out of my total staff who do criminal cases. You take away juvenile offender, child need of care, traffic, appeals, you put those folks aside, 20 to 23, 24 folks, including myself, and I've, I assign myself, I probably got six murders right now that I've assigned to myself, so I'm pitching in myself, but I don't have 36 folks that can go to the criminal assignment. So what I'm telling you is, when this final product comes to, is brought to bear by the state court system, the folks are going to come in and give us an assessment of what we need, I'm hoping I have enough lead time to come to you and say, I may need, you know, five or six or seven more attorneys to cover this. So.
Eighteen people would be added to it, as a result of this?
Potentially.
So if the state's mandating, that's what they're going to pay for?
Rather than give you a glib answer, I think the simple answer is no.
So this is an unfunded mandate from the Kansas Supreme Court in order to, what I'm being told, fit their computer system. I mean, have they, has anyone talked to them about this, about the hardship this could cause on us?
I believe they have.
I'm not necessarily one who believes, just because, you know, the Supreme Court wants to micromanage us, and we're supposed to do this, that we automatically, we decayed in, I think we need to push back. I mean, this is a significant impact that we would say would happen virtually, we will have, we can't phase this in, it's just like, boom.
Yeah. And let's put it this way, will I, at the end of the day, if someone says, you know, if the judges, I understand what you're saying, and I understand, but a B O C C is in a markedly different situation than a district attorney is. When the Supreme Court tells me I'm supposed to do something, I will, trust me, there'll be pushback from me. When the state court folks show up and tell me, you know, here's the plan we're going to put together, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask to be at the table, and I'm going to give them my very strong opinions on this. Some change is going to take place, and I think there's ways that we can improve efficiencies with this system. But if I'm going to have to be in 12 courtrooms at once, that's not how, what I'm set up for right now. And can I do it with 2.5 people, and you give me two per each one, and I have six that sit in floating behind, and I, maybe. I mean, this is my best, you know, what's the best bad option I've got? This is it. And then when that day comes, I'll come to you and say, this is what we think, where we think we're at. The other reality is this, the day that this goes live, I'm going to need help, I'm going to need more staff, yes. Over the next two to three years, then, I'm going to also be in a better position to see, okay, what's the reality of what this is going to look like in Sedgwick County? Because I, you know, well, let's just do it the way decentralization is done. That doesn't exist, from what I can tell. I've talked to folks in Reno County, they do it significantly different than Shawnee County does it, who does it significantly different than Johnson County does it. Now, you go to Rooks County, there's one guy, and he files 100 cases a year. Yeah, you know, okay, but we're not Rooks County. This is a place with 3,500 criminal cases, most of them are serious felonies. So, you know, this is my best, the best I can give you.
Do you have a cost estimate on?
I can get that for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just to give you a sense, I'm sorry, Commissioner Anzal, was there any more questions? Okay. Just to give you a final overview of the office, most of you have had a tour, this is our downstairs lobby, just kind of give you a sense of the space that we utilize. One thing that's, you know, if you turn, so you walk down the back to the guard check down there, turn and look to the east, the door on the right is my, the office in, or excuse me, the door in my office, door on the left goes downstairs, and these, you know, these are, the probation folks are downstairs, and so they, a lot of times, they'll have guys come in and have an active warrant, and they have to be brought out. And it makes sense for the sheriff not to bring them through the, you know, the elevators out front in the main lobby, where the guy's brother-in-law could be standing, and that could be a problem. However, it is not the ideal situation for my staff to have inmates walking through and having, off to your left there is the chairs, where folks come who have, who want to apply for traffic diversion, or who want to come in and talk to our consumer fraud division, that's where they sit. So, not an ideal situation. Let's just give you an idea of our consumer, we have one consumer fraud attorney, and this is his office. I would say he is, and I don't say this with any tongue-in-cheek, he is the most organized person, not only in the office, he's probably the most organized person I've ever known. And that being said, that's still what his office looks like, that's just the volume that we deal with. Our appellate attorney, one of our appellate attorneys, we have downtown, we have five at the juvenile division, but we have, I brought one of them back several years ago to handle what we call the 1507s, the ineffective assistance counsel claims, and the other appellate work that takes place just at the district court level, not the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals. And this gives you an idea of how many files one man deals with on a given day. It's astonishing how much work he gets accomplished. This is just an example of one attorney in our office, she handles the drug court, and she has a general trial calendar. Again, I don't consider her somebody who's particularly messy, this is just what a workstation looks like for an active attorney in our office. Pardon me. This is the records hub. If you walk in those doors, or that door rather, here, on the right-hand side, and go up the stairs into our office, when you get to the top of the stairs, that's where you're at, right? And the record section gives you an idea of how many folks are working in a fairly small space, handling all of our paper files. We are actively trying to go to a more of a digital format and have fewer paper files, but at the same time, we have cases from decades back that, you know, guys are, I've been out on a warrant for 10 years, and they get picked up, and we have to have a paper file, and then people go to trial, still need the paper to present to the jury. Kitchen break room, going to give you a sense of, this is our break room, it's also, as you're standing there looking in that direction, it's also behind, just going to be copy machines and things like that. One thing I would point out, when we're talking about space needs, I gave you a little taste of this at the B O C C presentation that I did a month ago, but I do think that there are efficiencies that can be gleaned from a reassessment of how the courthouse is set up, however you ultimately decide, but just to give you an example of this, and I don't know that the judges or the courts are entirely on board with this, but, so I speak, I guess my point is, my caveat is, this is my idea, I'm not sure that it's something that everybody's going to get on board with, but just an example of what could take place. When you walk in, if you have a traffic ticket in the Sedgwick County District Court, you are the person at the bottom of the screen, and that is the path to success for you that you must negotiate, to get your ticket taken care of, if you want to fight your ticket or fight the traffic accusation that's been levied against you. Not exactly a streamlined process. When you get to the fifth floor, this is what you face, this is the citizens as they wait in the hallway, and that's just a typical, typical day. Frankly, in my experience, that is a probably lower traffic, that's a kind of a light day, I guess is what I'm getting at. This is a, courtroom is the citizens wait there in the fifth floor, just a parenthetical, you'll note, if you can kind of see it there. In the middle of the courtroom is a pillar with, you've got the oak or the maple there on edging it. Not a particularly great design to have a pillar that blocks view from the judge, right square in the middle of the courtroom, but there it is. These are some of the signs one will deal with when they walk in the room, or try to figure out where it is they're supposed to be, and how they're supposed to attend themselves or comport themselves with the rules of the court. The signage is difficult, because it's been sort of ad hoc put together over time to deal with the questions that are habitually asked by citizens who are unfamiliar with this process. Another one out front, please, you know, silence, there's court in session. And next door are two other courtrooms, or another courtroom rather than one around the back, and then a couple, two more on the other side of the hallway. More signage, some of the nice graffiti in the jury box where the inmates sit as they're waiting their turn, they're getting bored, and so they leave their mark, I suppose. So the idea was, what, if I could recreate the traffic system, what would I do? Just to give an example, and the, the thing, sort of the idea that has been kicked around, at least, is that certain parts of administration and nonjudicial services would leave the courthouse. If that were to take place, that would leave, for instance, the treasurer's office. Not that I'm covetous of anybody's, hey, it's a nice, it's nice to, absolutely. But hypothetically, if we were to take that, if the, if Linda was going to head out, oh, there you go. This is what, an idea, when you walk in through the main courthouse from Main Street, and you walk in facing west, you go through the metal detectors, you would go to the left, and you kind of see that in that opening up there. You've all seen it a million times, that's where that sort of bank of clerks are, and they take, they interact with the public there. Leave that in place, that's a place where traffic clerks could be, where, I mean, there's going to be folks who show up, and their only real thing that they want is, I've got to show you that I did have insurance, you know, I really did, and you have to show that to somebody, you can't just call it in over the phone. We could have somebody sitting right there and get those folks in and out the door. We file 20, you know, on average, 20,000 to 23,000 traffic cases a year in Sedgwick County. It is not including what goes on in the city, I'm talking this courthouse. Yes, many of them are going to be more serious, you know, felonies and things like that, but those cases go to the criminal division. We still have 23,000-ish cases in the traffic division. Now, mercifully, a lot of those folks will pay their tickets over the phone, or call the clerk, or just walk in and pay it and walk out. But there are still going to be 10,000 to 15,000 cases that require someone to show up and interact with the court system. And you think about the foot traffic that puts on this building, the people walking in, taking the elevators, going up to the fifth floor. Then when they go to the fifth floor, you go back and find the myriad of places that they go all throughout the courthouse, all the places they need to go, they got to pay it, you know, talk to the traffic clerks, or maybe they're placed on a diversion, maybe they're placed on probation, and, but if you could get them all to this one side, deal with them in a one-stop shop, and get them right out the doors, you know, the foot traffic, the stress on this courthouse would be significantly impacted in a positive way. So it's just an idea, but it's, it gives you an idea of sort of the opportunity we have right now at this crossroads in terms of assessing how this courthouse is going to be utilized most efficiently. And if I'm a citizen coming in to pay my ticket, and, you know, I can't tell you how many times I'll get a phone call from somebody who'll say, hey, my daughter got a ticket away, you know, well, where do I go for that? Big blue courthouse, northwest corner, Central and Main, okay, where do I park, you know, just be a lot easier. So that is the presentation, but it gives you an idea of where we're at. Big picture is this, I'm out of space, I continue to utilize, you know, and I would, I guess I would also say this, I don't want it to be construed as somehow, this is some new thing. We have talked at each presentation I've made for the past, what, four or five years, that we're reaching an issue, and I think it's something that I, it's not a critical mass in this moment, but we're reaching it, as I've said for several years. What is changing is two things. One is, number one, the county's taking that assessment, so if you want to know where I'm at in three to 10 years, I'm going to need more folks. Not 50 or 100 more, but two, about 2.5 a year, to keep pace with what I'm dealing with. The elephant in the room for me is going to be decentralization. That is something that I did not anticipate a year ago, and is going to change that component, can change that equation for me. The extent to which, I don't know. I think the slide I gave earlier, the potential impact, is frankly, a fairly modest prospect or presentation on my part, or assessment, but I wanted to give you, you know, what I think the real impact may be on me to continue to do the job I'm tasked with doing. So that's where we're at. Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, in the presentation, we will have to skip, we were planning on hearing from Sheriff Jeff Easter, and he is on his way, so when he arrives, we will skip back to those PowerPoint So next, what I'd like to speak to is the county admin space usage, and I've said these numbers before, currently in the county courthouse, county admin occupies 54,442 square feet. And I won't go through the list, but you'll see there what those square footage needs are based on those departments and what they are occupying in the county courthouse. The other piece I'd like to point out is the county courthouse complex, and where we have other admin departments have other admin departments utilizing space in the county courthouse complex. And that is Historic Courthouse that occupies 19,745 square feet with IT and central services as well as HR. We have IT in the Munger Building that utilizes the entire Munger Building at 16,400 square feet. And then we have a very small portion of admin, that's Project Services in the Ronald Reagan Building, occupying 565 square feet. In total, admin square footage for both the county courthouse, Historic Courthouse, Munger, and Ronald Reagan is just a little over 91,000 square feet. So next, I'd like to move on to the other space needs. And so the first space needs I'd like to speak to is the Elections Office. Elections currently occupies about 18,614 square feet. That's split into two areas, the Historic Courthouse where they have office space of 8,196 square feet and Stillwell where they have their warehouse space at 10,418 square footage. Their programming need that Justin did with them a while back states that they will need 27,985 square feet. Their preferences for one location so as to consolidate their office and warehouse space into one. We are currently under review of a possible location, doing some research there. And I talked to Tabitha the other day and she still is not aware of what the impacts of homeland security requirements, those are still unknown. So you heard from Lindsay that we have a 2019 CIP request for 3 million for this space. Recently, we understand that record storage has a space need requirement. They are currently, records is currently stored in the county courthouse basement as well as a commercial vendor, UVS, in Wichita, which is an above-ground site, and the Hutchinson Salt Mines, which is a below-ground site. We have several departments in the county that utilize UVS storage. Storage costs for UVS in 2016 was approximately 123,000. 114 of that was paid out of county tax funds. We understand a large portion of the record storage is for public safety, the DA, sheriff, regional forensic science center, and district court. And it's estimated on average that we have about 1,070 square feet in the UVS sites. So like I said, we understand from county courthouse that their record space is at capacity. In speaking with Anna Meyerhoff from Central Services, we understand if there are, the need for owned or leased space needs for record storage, there are three requirements which would be security, stability against natural and man-made disasters, as well as space and structure, which they've estimated approximate need of 7,300 square feet. That is to pull out of UVS and there's a little bit in there for growth. They would require 10 feet walls and ceilings so that they can go vertical with shelving. And there is a temperature and humidity control there that needs to happen in that space, as well as the ability to move records to and from county locations. Next is the East Tag Office space needs. In speaking with county treasurer Linda Kazzar, she believes there's some employee efficiencies and overtime savings that can occur to consolidate three satellite locations into one East Tag Office. She's looking at approximately 10,000 to 12,000 square feet for that space. Currently, I am working with Linda Kazzar and Rick Durham to understand a little bit more on the efficiencies and overtime savings that would occur, as well as a buy versus lease scenario for this space. Currently, we are researching available east locations within her boundaries, which is to the north, Central, to the south, Kellogg, to the west, Oliver, and to the east, Webb. Next are EMSS space needs. You heard from Dr. Gallagher a few weeks ago for the move that they will be making to the Murdoch Tag Office. The programming need that came out of that is virtually identical to their, the current space at Murdoch Tag Office. He indicated that with this space move, there would be compliance with the city-county contract, access to county and city leadership, a central location for emergency response, and accessibility to the SIM Center for responders. I just recently received the construction cost estimates from Justin, and so that's under review. But you are aware that there is a 2019 CIP request for remodeling this location for I'd like to ask Justin Graham to come up and just give a very brief overview on the first-floor schematic design as well as the basement schematic design.
Thank you, Tanya. Good morning. Plan you see here is the current, or the former Murdoch Tag Office. The plan you see north would be oriented up, and so the south half of this plan is the offices, the traditional offices space that were there. And then the north half is the open area where the clerks used to sit. We're developing this plan with the south half being offices for those individuals coming over with the MSS. We have two offices on the left side here, IT, copy area here, recording space at the south end, that's where they do their training videos that they send out. On the right side, we have director's office and a future office below that with a conference room in the middle. And then a credentialing specialist office located here adjacent to the simulation center. The simulation center today is mostly an open space, and that's shown developed into a simulation center where we have a number of scenarios of different spaces that the emergency responders would be tested in and go through that exercise. Supporting that, there is a control room, queuing, debriefing, and another simulation office space up here. At the lower level, that just is a portion of the building, a small footprint of the building. Currently, or formerly, there was a break room down there in storage, and we've identified those needs, those type of spaces to remain in the lower level, break room and storage. Any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay.
All right. So I would like to ask Sheriff Jeff Easter to come up and speak to his space needs, and let me get his PowerPoint keyed up.
Thank you. Well, good morning. In speaking with the manager and his team, looking at space utilization for the court system and the DA's offices expansion. If we are to stay inside the county building, the eighth floor, which is our judicial services, which covers courtroom protection, which is judges, attorneys, victims, witnesses, and defendants, covers our warrant section or warrant service, contains also our process service, which is civil papers, evictions, seizures, extradition, which is our out-of-state extradition, which includes our two pilots, and the transportation section, which transports all of the inmates out of county, all of our mental commitments, and then all of the doctors' appointments and hospital stays that we have to transport inmates to. So that's in, within our law enforcement bureau, and that's the judicial division that's stored on the eighth floor, or housed on the eighth floor. When we looked at, and you know that we just presented information to the BOCC for four additional deputies, those four additional deputies would go into eighth-floor operations. This existing space is 4,400 square feet. They're pretty much stacked on top of each other right now. You know, it's worked for us for several years, so they're pretty used to it up there. It's a bullpen-type setting, and there's no individual cubicles, offices, anything like that. Currently, right now, there's no space to grow whatsoever. There's no break room, there's absolutely no storage room. The issue on the eighth floor, if we talked about moving the eighth floor, there's also four elevators up there, which, those elevators are designed to move inmates in and out of safely and securely. There's also a couple of rooms up there to house the inmates in while the court is in break, or those type of things. So it's kind of like a mini jail up there that's built into the eighth floor. It would be rather expensive to move the eighth floor to any other floor within the county building. We needed to identify a costly function to relocate due to holding cells and direct access to elevators. Again, what I just said, those are, those are things that I don't think are plausible. The north end of the eighth floor is what's called court security. These are all the court guards and their office space. We have warrants, there's four individuals for warrants. They're back in the southeast corner of the building. Our civil section, which is the folks that serve all the civil protection orders and those type of things, are located on the south end of the floor. In behind and onto the west, there's actually offices there for the two sergeants, lieutenant, and the extradition folks that are our pilots. There's offices in there. Clerical, which we have five clerical staff up there, are housed right in the middle. And that's our storage and break room up there. So if we're to stay on the eighth floor and there's any possibility of expansion, we would need additional workstations for projected deputy growth if those four positions are... You guys vote on that and say I can get those. We, again, I refer to it as a bullpen or open-style workstations. We're not asking for any cubicles or anything like that. And we'll also need more storage space. And that's all I have. Understanding you're going to ask questions after, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. If you can jump ahead to, now we're going to move to the comm care, CSS, and ATS space. Okay, so this location is 40, 35 East Harry. The plan here is to move comm care, CSS, and ATS into one location into the soon-to-be-vacated appraiser space. That's approximately 26,447 square feet. What this does is consolidate two leases into one. There's some cost savings there to do that and to reduce the space that they are currently occupying, which is around 36,000 square feet. The floor plan that comm care has worked out is a better layout for both these departments to be together. Maryland can speak to the better client location because of its vicinity to, via Christie St. Joseph. Current status on this is comm care has reviewed the schematic design and draft lease, and right now, legal is currently reviewing the draft lease on this. And so this is just the schematic design. Comm care tried to stay pretty close to the current layout as it is now. Mostly the work will be done in the center of the floor plan, and that is going from a more open space cubicle-type workstations to private offices. That is client-based for these addiction treatment counselors to meet with those This is just the square foot plan. What this shows is there is some space on the mezzanine that can be utilized for storage. In this area here, they will be able to utilize a small conference room and a large conference room. And then here to the left here, or to the south of the building, will be the employee entrance, and that hallway is all strictly for comm care. This is the back entry into the space. Again, twenty-six thousand square feet there. Okay, so that summarizes our county space needs for the county courthouse. We understand district court, DA's, and sheriff's space needs. We understand the space needs for elections office and record storage, as well as east tag office. We also have a plan in place for EMSS to move to the old Murdoch tag office, as well as the comm care plan to move into the Appraiser space that will be vacated later this year when they move into the Ronald Reagan building. And so at this point, I'd like to turn over the presentation to the manager for the next part of the discussion.
Next slide.
Sure.
All right, this is kind of the final slide. As you, I mean, we threw a lot of information at you, and, and really, it's to give you an opportunity to understand kind of what I've heard the last year and kind of went into this budget work, the budget workshops that we've had just the last couple of months. A lot of needs, a lot of requirements, a lot of things coming down the pike that we have to be prepared for. And what I asked to do, I asked the staff and I also asked the electeds that briefed you today if they could look out future in terms of, you know, what the next three to, three to ten years would look like. Because any decision that we had, a major purchase like this, whether we get a new admin building or we readjust in this building, whatever money we spend, certainly in order to be good stewards of the citizens' money, we need to make some strategic decisions because this is a strategic decision. If you look at the first comment in terms of a decision, whether it's to move county operations to a county admin building, right now, as we talked earlier in the slide, just to move out of this building would gain us about forty-six thousand square feet. If you notice the requirements that, you know, both the DA and the judicial court had was about forty-seven thousand square feet. So it'd almost be a trade-off. However, the sheriff's piece of it, whether that would be now or it would be ten years from now, to gain more space, you would get additional amount of space, as you notice up there towards the bottom of about nine thousand square feet. So that gives you some future growth in this building. But regardless of what you do, something has to be done. And for us, it's very apparent that the needs in the district court and the DA are going to force the county administrative function, you know, out of this building. And it's just a matter of when the B O C C wants, wants to pull that trigger and, and whether it's now. Now, you get the benefit of, we know the economy, we know we're going to get fairly low interest rates and we're going to bond it. We did put in a 2019 CIP. As you notice, all of our major infrastructure costs, we put in the 2019 CIP budget for a, a decision. And a parking spot for me, for, for the county manager's budget. As you know, I'm getting close to presenting that to you, which is why I wanted to present this to you now, just to start getting some feedback from you. And then with that, I'd like to open up for questions while we have the staff here and the electeds here before we have to get out of here. I imagine that we've got probably about maybe ten, fifteen minutes before we have to start moving across to the city hall.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have initial questions? It seems like this is an issue that will, one question's going to lead to another, so I don't know how this might, how complicated our discussion might be, but now's the time for first questions, at least. Okay, let, we'll start with David.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you.
Can I call you David?
You can. A couple of questions. I thought that moving Dr. Gallagher over was happening before 2019.
I think off. Well, that's actually, that will happen before 2019, yes.
Okay. All right. That takes care of that one. The second thing is, you say that the CIP for an admin facility is 2019, but we're looking for facilities right now.
Correct. Well, we're not looking for any facilities right now.
Oh, we're not.
I wanted to present to you our space management requirements before we started looking for a specific facility. It was really be the next step of the B O C C to give me the ability to go look for and, and based off of the policy we discussed, if we did this, you know, based off your decision, I would then set up the opportunity to make recommendations to you of a county administrative building.
Okay, so if we start looking for facilities now, if we say, go start looking for facilities, once you locate those, do we wait till 2019 to buy it, or are we able to start purchasing it now?
Lindsey can, can share this with you, but certainly before 2019, but 2019 is when the bonding would happen.
So for facility projects, our typical practice is then to make acquisitions and do the project and then reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds after the fact so that we're not borrowing more than we need. And so I think the, the proposal that I presented as a part of the initiative, CIP, would say that's when we do the bonding certainly would prevent us from taking action before that if we were going to make that purchase and essentially use the fine balance in the general fund to support that in the short term.
So depending on how the dominoes fall, what's the earliest that you could see relocation of the admin functions so that you can start working on this building to, to meet the needs of everyone else?
I think the earliest would be 2018, I think would be the earliest. It wouldn't preclude us from finding a place before then, but before any, any steps or anything could happen, it certainly would be 2018 before we could probably move anything out of this building.
Okay. It's all my questions right now.
Okay. Richard?
Okay, the sheriff's moved out. That's that project where we had a second and third floor, right?
Correct. We'd move his space out and, and push all his function into the, into the, to the, no, his facility next door, to the jail. It would require, those are projects that would require renovations in his jail, his unused space.
Right, and that's all, right.
So that would gain us about nine, that would gain us about nine thousand square feet.
That we can then use for the DA or whatever.
Or for whatever. I think the initial plan was actually to build a new B O C C room on that space and area that they would vacate and then relieve this side and, and make space over here, but we, we certainly would have different plans.
Nevertheless, we'd have ten thousand, or nine thousand extra.
About nine thousand square feet extra if we moved the sheriff's functions out first, at about five million, it's five point two million.
We need to look carefully at that. I don't want to overreact to these projections and the issues going on. Just a system law, we're not told that right now. Keep your laws and different things, and I think we need, perhaps some honest discussion about some of that stuff, just kind of understand everything that we're in.
Okay, thank you. My, my question is, in, in this sequence of events, to move forward, what's the first decision or the first initiative, and what's the second?
I think-
Is the first thing to say, "Okay, we need to move forward," and then, and then the next thing after that, to find an administration location so that we can set a timetable, or, or have we kind of set an order of logical sequence?
I think the first decision would be, do we need to make more space in this building in order to support the growing requirements in the judicial system? So for me, the decision is, are we, do you want the administrative function to move out of this building, which would set up me trying to find a, a different location to support that.
Well, we could make more space by doing that project there. Let's give you nine thousand.
But she saw the requirements for them was about forty-seven thousand. Let's just say they were fifty percent over the projected requirements. That would still put us at more requirement than we have in that one space, the space that the sheriff would leave.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, even two-thirds over, I mean, still would put us over the requirements of what we need. I, you know, and I can't, you know, I, I think that for me was powerful. You know, even if they were highballing it, for me, the forty-seven thousand square feet, you know, and you get sort of three professionals who are, who are looking at, at this comprehensively and over this last year, for me, it was, we've got to find, for me, I came down to the conclusion, we've got to find a new county admin building.
Michael?
Yeah. Well, manager, that, that's, yeah, it's apparent, we need you to start moving in that direction. I mean, looking at these pictures, it's, it's frankly, it's unacceptable to have our district attorney living in that condition. I mean, anybody can look at that. You just can't do it. And regardless of not what the Supreme Court says about the building, we, we do need accommodated courts, and we've heard what Ellen was saying earlier about what they need, and it's going to be a good thing for Sedgwick County to get more judges here. I know it's actually causing consternation in other judicial districts that might be losing it, but, but that would be a very good thing for our county and our judicial district to get those additional judges. And our judges will tell you they need those added resources, they need more help. So anything we can do to be more accommodating to the Supreme Court so that we can expedite getting these judges here is something that we need to look at, the way that the legislature is looking at that, how to handle the court system across state Kansas, which is people are fighting to keep judges, and we have an opportunity to gain them, which, yeah, other communities are really upset about, but, but it's a, it's a big, would be a boon for us. So, so I, I think it's apparent that we need to start moving as quick as possible and finding a building that fits our needs in the downtown corridor so that we can start moving out. And just like Commissioner Dennis was talking about moving Dr. Gallagher quicker, that, that was something when, when he and I went to work at the facility, being in a basement, not being compliant with our agreement between the city of Wichita, that's unacceptable as well. And that's why I think we lit a fire to get that done quicker, because we knew it needed to happen.
Right.
We're obviously, we, we know this is happening, getting an administration building, so the quicker we move out, the better it's going to be for our county staff.
Absolutely. One thing too, if, if you understand and why I asked Tanya to kind of give you the history of this building, you know, as it's grown and functions have kind of come in and gone out, functions have been pigeonholed all across the building. And I think, I think Mark did a great job of kind of showing just the traffic function. There is no efficiency in that. But it was built off of the fact that function has been pigeonholed around the building to fit when, you know, space, space had opened up, you know, function had moved in. And it's just kind of made it an inefficient type of building in the judicial side of it. So if you moved us out of it and you do a deliberative strategy on rearranging the functional aspects of what the judicial system does here, you have the, the ability for the citizen, citizenry to actually create a real efficiency in the judicial system on how you go to court, what you, where you go, what floors. And I think we can do that in a very deliberative fashion, working with, with Mark's office and Judge Fleetwood and the different aspects of, of what we do here. We can do it very deliberatively. But also, as we move out here, there will be some square footage that, that remains that gives us also the ability that if we do renovations in this building, we can't move function out of this building, but we can move, move it to a different floor to allow a floor to be renovated. It gives us the ability to hot seat, to, to add to the renovation effect, the where we're not doing, we're not kicking people out or trying to find trailers to put around the building to move function, but we can do it within the building. And, and that will take a series of years to do, so, but it gives us some, some wiggle room to be able to support that function as well, which is, which is a good thing.
Well, I'm a lot better at hindsight than I am foresight, but I appreciate the fact that we're looking forward to see what the needs are and will, and it's, and it appears that this plan provides for some flexibility in the future that we just, you know, it's hard to predict right now. But I, I agree with Michael that we need to start moving towards this. I mean, the, the needs are clearly there, we have a lot of them, and we can do it sequentially as you suggested. But I'm just thinking about the financing side of it, if we're going to take on a project like this, I, I want to have decisions made such that we can take best advantage of the low interest rates that we, that currently exist. And so I'm, I'm in favor of getting to those decision points quickly and also in favor of, of like, taking advantage of that Murdoch Street building as quickly as we can.
Absolutely.
As far as the new judges, we keep hearing about, who makes that decision? How do we know that they're coming? When are they scheduled to come? I keep hearing this, but I've heard it for years. Do you mind that?
The legislature makes the decision.
The legislature makes the decision? And they're planning on adding judges here?
The Supreme Court and Judge Fleetwood will continue to request and, and express the need.
I, I see. Okay, so we don't really know. I, I, okay.
Ellen, didn't you say we should be hearing something like any day now on that?
Yes. I don't believe we will receive one this year.
Seventeen, twenty-seventeen?
Right.
The twenty-eighteen?
So what do you need from us? You need a consensus? You go ahead and develop a plan and present that to us for approval? Is that what you're wanting right now?
Yes, sir.
Well, let, let's give us a few days to di, to absorb this, digest it. I mean, I, we've been kind of talking about it, now we've got a document, and I'm, I'm online with you, David, that we need to get, but, but give us a week, maybe, before we arrive at the consensus, so that all commissioners feel like they've had an opportunity to understand it and will have an opportunity to express their perspective on it. So maybe we need a follow-up discussion at next half meeting.
Excellent. One other question.
Excuse me, Jim.
Have we yet got a analysis on the historic courthouse? We've talked a lot about, talked a lot about this building, but talked about the election office moving out. I don't know if that provides a space that's interesting to the DA or the sheriff or the judicial branch in any way, but if there's any use of that building that solves any of this need. I understand there's a print shop over there, I understand they have HR over there, and I think I just mentioned a minute ago, I think that is the intent that HR will probably move to the county admin building, if I understand correctly.
We-
Elections, we go, who knows where. Print shop, as far as I can tell, will, will pretty much anywhere.
And we also-
Records in this building probably could go a lot of places, I would think. So there's a lot of things that I think that, between the Munger Building and the historic courthouse, I'd like to have that kind of analyzed and plan on what's currently there and what is planned, potentially moving or some of this stuff.
I think a lot of that analysis has already been done. Also, IT's over there, our main server's over there, a lot of Wes's operation is between there and the Munger Building. We also have court system that Ellen has function that is also over there, but we have looked at that too.
So is it planned that any of those functions, Wes's functions, will move out of either Munger or historic courthouse?
I haven't, I haven't concentrated on that. You know, really, it's about, you know, I was concentrating on this building and how much square footage I would need if I moved out of this, but that certainly could be on the table. But, but it's, we need a lot more square footage than what, you know, we could fit into the old courthouse, you know, based off of the square footage. Don't have near the square footage over there that we would need, plus we have most of it filled already. I would like, if we did do a, a move to an administrative building, look at moving potentially HR with us, to kind of keep them under our umbrella, but there would still be function that we would keep into the courthouse that doesn't make sense to move.
I understand HR has training rooms as well, so the square footage you're using for training rooms and further office space and that type of thing, plus the elections. How much space does that free up in that building?
Can you ask a question again, what, what exactly-
So if you were to move HR with their training rooms, and I understand there's also a training room over in Munger, I'm not sure why we need both, they're very similar, but should we go training rooms in HR and elections, out of, out of that building, how much square footage does that create?
HR has seven thou, they utilize seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two square feet in the historic courthouse. Elections utilizes eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-six square feet in the historic courthouse.
So that includes the training rooms and things like that conference rooms and all that's part of that?
For the elections office or for-
Either one.
Yes. Yeah, it, it would be their entire space that they utilize in the, in the building.
And I know we do some training, some training classrooms over there in Munger Building, and it seems like a little bit of a duplication, maybe that could be the same space, I'm just wondering about that. So if that space was, was relocated with HR, if it was to move, how much space is, is used for training over at Munger?
Well, the, the, the training facility, I believe you're speaking on, it's hotel suite.
Yeah.
Goes down wayward. So we did, we, we still, it's, it's a very small room, probably ten foot, my guess, two foot, office, office seats.
All right, never mind. So we're looking at about sixteen thousand square feet probably, just the historic courthouse, sixteen thousand square feet. Thank you.
Okay, we are, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Richard.
Sorry, with respect to the judicial operations, do we, do we have, has anyone looked at the utilization, utilization rate of the courtrooms, are they being utilized to the maximum efficiency? I know the previous county manager thought that they weren't, and that's something I don't think we've ever addressed. I want to make sure that we're, I don't know if that's even being looked at or been evaluated or anything. I think that's important. I mean, I, I just have lots of questions about this because I told lots of staff, and I don't want to just build a bunch more rooms that aren't going to be used efficiently.
I have not looked at how efficient, I mean, I honestly, I do not want to get into their business on if they're, I mean, that's a part of their operation, but I have not looked at it.
Well, I understand, but if we're going to be, taxpayers are going to be flipping the bill, I think we, we got to have an obligation to be able to tell them that the current space being used, being utilized to the maximum extent possible and efficiently, but if you don't ask the question, we never know the answer. I, I really see everyone pressing needs, me and the DA and the sheriff, to be honest, and a lot of this other stuff is some speculation, I think, and I'm concerned about that, and I still have questions about the efficient use of the board, so.
Well, during this next week, perhaps we need to list our questions and, and direct them to Tanya or the manager to get them answered, then we'll take another stab at this next week. It's a big decision, and we want to make sure that we, as you say, make the right decision for our constituency. Okay, we have a little bit of a time constraint, are we still okay on that right now? Okay?
We are, we're approaching nine and three of them.
Okay. Is-
I'd just like to thank Tanya for her hard work on this, I know this wasn't easy.
No, it wasn't.
Thank you.
It, it probably took you all of a, what, three or four hours to put this together?
Yeah.
Okay. We appreciate that work and appreciate the presentations by the elected officials that are here with us. I mean, big decision, we need to have the information in front of us. I don't want to shoot from the hip, I do that a lot of times, but not on this one, so. Commissioners, is there anything else you want to bring up today? Commissioners? All right. Any of our staff here around this table have items to bring up? The elected officials in the room? Anything right now or added, add to? All right, then.
Take your questions about this presentation. I'd be happy to come back and, and-
You know, I have, Mr. District Attorney, I happen to be in the district attorney's office in Lawrence, Kansas, looking around there, and I hope they got a plan because they're just as bad as you are, or as bad a situation as you have.
That was recorded, too.
They're building a new courthouse though, right? They passed a sales tax in Johnson County?
Right. And honestly, this is not an uncommon situation, for instance, my first job was in Jackson City, but when I was there, the old courthouse, well, delicate here, there was pigeons got into the attic, literally, there was so much leftover from the pigeons, but they had to empty the courthouse and reevaluate it.
Oh, wow.
But they moved the prosecutor's office out and had another, had that put through another building or, or into this process once, many years ago. So it's something that happens in a lot of jurisdictions, some, like the prosecutor office, the sheriff, et cetera. The pace of criminal justice system, that pace of the space, you know, courthouse is being built, turn the century, re, et cetera.
Okay, well, before we say anything else that we shouldn't say, we'll just-
Shoot him, you stop.
We'll be adjourned.